Good morning. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Welcome to your boardroom. It is April 12th and it is a little past 8:30. And if we could have our call to order with a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Michaels, Supervisor Flynn, and Supervisor Long.
Present. Thank you. And then I'd like to ask if we would stand for a moment of affirmation and then a pledge to our flag. We could take a moment to think about the work that we do today here for the county. We have in our agenda two focuses that look at child abuse in our county and victims in our county. If we could take a moment to think about what we do both through our wonderful county family but as a community in support of both of those folks that we really do try to support. And Supervisor Bennett, would you lead us in the pledge?
Hand over heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the minutes of the meeting of April 5th and Wednesday, April 6th. And seeing no objection to that motion, so ordered. At this time, Mr. CEO, our agenda review.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are two adjustments to your agenda. Consent item number 12 shows a four fifths vote. That is not accurate, a three fifths vote to carry. And on consent item number 13, there is a revised letter on recommendation number two.
Okay. That's it. That's it on our agenda review. Can we have an action for approval of that agenda?
Second.
Motion and second, seeing no objection to that motion, so ordered. Then we have our consent agenda. Let me see if I have any cards on consent. And I don't. So the consent agenda 10 through 21 is before us?
Move approval is amended.
Motion and second, seeing no objection to that motion, so ordered. This time, we will have public comments on items not appearing on our agenda as following the guidelines is presented in the agenda. I'd like to first call up Carol Dean Williams. And good morning, Mr. Williams.
Good morning. Since Supervisor Flynn was in Washington, DC last week, I want to tell him that I'm here to praise you for the second week. And because he's asked me many times, shouldn't there be some praise for the board? Well, this is my second week of praise. Carol Dean Williams, almost 60-year resident Ventura County. And I'd like to call your attention that Steric Krestman has failed you again. This is National Lieberry Week, started April 10th. And there's no recognition of that on your agenda. But you do have an angel for a CEO. And I'm praising him for his work. Now Brenda Lee sung this one. "I might be a song off, but I'm not a poem off." Johnny One Time. It takes three to explain one. Your CEO only has to be Johnny Be Good once. Even on the $1 bill, in God We Trust, your Johnny One Time is able to fulfill. Will three corral one CEO and make Johnny One Time Ventura County's hero? Lieberry rhymes with lie and stores its microfilm of perverted truth. Why? I say, take one long look at your lieberry. It's the microfilm, not the books. Lieberry rhymes with libel and stores its microfilm like the cowardly lion. It takes three to explain one. Your CEO is one step away from Zion. Yes, I'm disappointed. I even had the word library in my poem and it's National Library Week. I was going to read it at the proclamation.
Can you pronounce again the word library?
Pardon?
Will you pronounce again the word library?
Oh, lie. Lie-ber-y. Lie. L-I-E-b-er-y. So, I'd like to, your CEO and I are working on this microfilm that's in your library that has printed that I've been convicted. Well, all the records are in, from the courts, the DA, the sheriff, and the Ventura PD. No convictions for Carol Dean Williams. Zip. Zero. But there they are in your library on microfilm saying Carol Dean Williams has been convicted. Well, since Supervisor Flynn didn't get to see this, the city of Ventura, John, published this A, B, C, S, and your deputy mayor works upstairs. And if you take out the A, accountable government, and take out the C, civic engagement, you're only left with BS, John.
That just tickled him.
Oh, that's pretty good that the government printed that. That's pretty darn good. Well, you know, I stand in the shoes of AD 1645. At least John Bunyan is getting known. Here he was arrested, spent 14 years in prison because he wouldn't read from the Book of Common Prayer. Holy moly, 1776. I had laid in prison about seven weeks. Under California law, when you're put in jail, they have three hours to give you your first phone call. Three hours. He laid in prison seven weeks when the jailer brought him forth to read his bill of indictment that he devishly and perniciously abstained from coming to church.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
David Friedlander.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. David Friedlander from the Ventura County Partnership for Safe Families. It's the last time that I'll be able to invite you to the Abuse Across the Lifespan Conference, which is next week with Dr. Vincent Fletti and Dr. Linda Chamberlain. We think it's going to be a really impactful, wonderful conference. At lunchtime, Attorney General Bill Lockyer is going to be speaking. And I don't want to put any guilt on any of you, but I know we don't want him to know that our city leaders aren't engaged in this. So hopefully, we'll have some of you there for the conference. And we'll be looking forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for all your work in putting this together. Appreciate it. It's going to be an excellent conference. Chris Mann. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Chris Mann from the Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association. First, I'd like to congratulate your board, the sheriff and the district attorney, for reaching a settlement on the issues associated with Proposition 172 and 4088. While this settlement's certainly good news for the citizens of Ventura County, one issue still remains that I'd like to bring to your attention. That issue is allocation of Proposition 172 funds to the fire department. Despite being included in the Language of Ordinance 4088, as well as in the minds of the voters, the fire department has not provided any funding from Proposition 172. With just a fair share of Proposition 172 funds, the fire department could improve efficiency, increase safety and services to the public, and restore positions that were lost in previous budget cuts. I hope your board will consider this issue and come up with a way to correct this inequity by providing the fire department with a fair share of Proposition 172 funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. That concludes the public comment cards that have been submitted for the board this morning. And now we will move to board comments. And I'd like to start with Supervisor Michaels. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I have no comments other than to request that the board adjourn in memory of the people on this list. And I would call out Marine Lance Corporal Juan Venegas, who was a citizen of Sumi, the fourth uniformed military person to be lost in Iraq in the city of Sumi. He served his country with honor.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, I have the pleasure to point out to everybody that on Saturday, April 2nd, the American Red Cross presented its Clara Barton Awards for Exceptional Achievements, Personal, Professional Philanthropy, Community Service, Public Safety, and Emergency Preparedness. And two people associated with the county received Clara Barton Award. Supervisor Kathy Long for the Public Servant of the Year Award. And our Director of Human Services, Barbara Gurney, for the Diversity Ambassador of the Year Award. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I would just like to let the board know that we had the good fortune of having a representative of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and the Coastal Conservancy to take a tour with the COO of Rockwell out on their site. They have a proposal before the board for a general plan amendment, but they are also a willing seller if a conservancy or others can afford them. It's a really valuable piece of property. It's about 25 acres, a major wildlife corridor. It's adjacent to thousands of acres of open space. And as I mentioned, there is a willing seller. Additionally, the residents have formed a 300-member group called CORE to preserve this particular area. And I was really pleased that these conservancy directors were willing to come out. And hopefully, we might be able to get some funding. The Rockwell Open Space Buffer is already on the COSCA Caneo Open Space Conservancy Agency's list for acquisition. It's now voted on by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy at our last meeting on Monday to put it on their list for acquisition. And hopefully, the Coastal Conservancy will do the same. So I just let you know that. And I'd also like to ask that the board close in memory of the people on this list. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes. I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. And I don't have any other comments.
Okay. Thank you. I too have a list to present, to ask the board to adjourn in memory of. And I also have a packet from Superintendent Dr. Charles Weiss that I will provide to the board that was handed out yesterday at the press conference regarding the AB 780 enactment at the local level. And as reported in the paper today, the superintendent did agree to enact that, to bring it to the local level, which means it brings it back to the county committee so that there can be a good community dialogue on the challenges facing the two districts and the unification challenge. Okay, that concludes in our board comments. And we will now move right ahead to item number 27, the Fire Protection District. Authorization to apply for a USDA Forest Service Community Protection Grant. Good morning. Good morning, Chief Roper.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Bob Roper, Fire Chief. Before you is a request to apply for a grant through the U.S. Department of Agriculture. This is the Community Protection Grant application. Currently, this project is what we've done up in Upper Ojai on Caesar Road Project. This project, we deal annually with the U.S. Forest Service in cooperation to do structural protection on the homes, remove the vegetation. This project, we've been working on for a number of years and was quite instrumental in 1999 when the ranch fire went through, and it prevented about 80 homes from burning. So this is part of our annual maintenance project, and this is, the Forest Service has grant application funds available for us. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions by the board? Move approval? It's a motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none.
Thank you.
So ordered. Thank you, chief. Good opportunity. Item 28, Channel Islands Harbor Amendment Purchase Order Contract, Gold Coast Land Clearing. Morning, Ms. Greger.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm here with a relatively simple item. I just wanted to point out to you that how much I appreciate our harbor master and maintenance crew on this particular job. They got started January 10th, actually. It says January 14th initiating the cleanup, and I believe that's what resulted in such a good price for this particular cleanup contract. As it ended up now, our latest word we're finishing this week is that 1,700 tons of debris have been taken from these two beaches at a cost I expect to be somewhat under $200,000. By comparison, in the last El Nino, we removed just under 300 tons for $72,000. So, but from 300 tons to 1,700 tons gives you some indication of what kind of a storm season we had this year. The other thing I wanted to point out is that at no cost to the county and extremely cooperative was the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service who cooperated with us throughout this entire process, beginning with the storm and talking about how to clean up the beach in a way that would not be disturbing to the birds who nest on that particular beach. And they really knocked themselves out to help and to come down and monitor us every week without slowing down the process. So we appreciate that very much. What I'm looking for today is approval to get this contract approved. We didn't know when we started how much it would cost, although with debris eight feet deep in spots, we knew it would be some. But we're here today to get approval for the final contract amount.
Question, Supervisor Parks?
Was that all removed to a landfill?
It was not all removed to a landfill. Some of it was able to be ground up, unfortunately because of the, and reused for green waste. Unfortunately, because of the oil seeps in the channel this year, a great deal of even the wood debris was coated with oil and had to be disposed of in a different way.
That was kind of an unknown leak, wasn't it? Or no one ever really figured out what the source of all that oil was?
Yeah, as far as we've been told, no one has yet determined what that was from. But that was one of the reasons we hurried. We didn't want oil settling on the beach.
Right.
Other questions?
The wood too, so issue.
That's right.
Anyway, the residents are very pleased with this.
Well, good, and I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you.
Move approval? It's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 26, healthcare agency ratification approval of contract, State Department Health Good morning, Ms. Davis.
Good morning, Supervisor Long, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm Karen Davis, Deputy Director for the Healthcare Agency. The item before you today is to request ratification and approval for the annual state contract for the California Healthcare for Indigent Program, also known as CHIP. The total allocation for this this year with interest is $389,664. We're also requesting a ratification and approval for the state contract for the Emergency Medical Services Appropriation Funds. The totals with interest on that as allocated this year is $349,641. Both of these programs provide healthcare services to the indigent population in this county, and the emergency services are all for physician services. Be happy to answer any questions. Also, I'd like to point out that the state just recently sent us these contracts that are retroactive to July, so that's the only reason why we're presenting them at this point.
Questions?
Sounds like the state. Move approval?
Motion?
Second.
Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 30, CEO, approval to initiate sale of county-owned surplus real property. Good morning, Mr. Dursey.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. Paul Dursey from the county executive office. I'm here today to request your board to begin the, to approve the process to begin the sale of the surplus property out on Olson Road, what we call affectionately the old East Valley Law Enforcement Station. It's been vacant for about 15 years, and we finally got around to deciding that we don't need it anymore. So requesting that your board, that your board find that it is surplus and authorize Public Works to begin the process to sell it. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer it. We also have representatives from Public Works who will be initiating that process.
Questions?
No, just a comment. Obviously, after 15 years, we've not found a use for that piece of property, and we do have some reserved property, literally a half a mile or quarter mile away. And so I believe this is a liability. I think over the years, you've all seen it raise its head every once in a while, but the building itself is destroyed, it's scraped clean, and I don't know that we have any use, so I would move approval of this and get it off the, out of our risk pool.
It's a motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. So ordered. Thank you. Our next item is probation agency item. And do I see anybody here?
I would move approval.
Second.
It is item 31, and there's a motion and a second for approval. Any objection to the motion? Any questions? Seeing none.
We always approve money.
So ordered. Yes, we do. We like to approve continuation of funding. All right, and our next item up is Public Works, report of the use of emergency contract authority for the director of Public Works, which is item 32. And it's one that's been before us before. Are there any questions?
Move the item.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Seeing no objection to that item. Hearing none. So ordered. Item 33.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. So ordered. Item 34.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. So ordered. Those are all just for the public record, emergency contract authority that's been on our agenda for the last umpty-umps, umpty-ump weeks.
Thanks to the storms.
Thanks to the storms. And Public Works is doing an excellent job in tracking those contracts. Item 35.
Move to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file and a second. Hearing no objection to that motion. So ordered. We have breezed through this one, so now we will go into closed session since we don't have further items on the agenda until 9:30 time certain. So we'll move into closed session, and we thank you for being present, and we'll be
Okay, Board members, we're back in order here and we're going to go to our 9:30 time certain items. And the first one we have is to declare April 2005 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I know we have many in the audience with us. It's a pleasure to have Ted Myers here, our Director of our Human Services Agency, and Judy Rivera. And I'm going to, if I might, read some of the highlights from the Child Abuse Prevention Month and then step down and please share with us what we're going to be doing in recognition of the same. We're certainly, unfortunately, all aware that child abuse is a social problem, and it truly does impact every community in every state in our nation. It affects growth and development of children from every ethnic and socioeconomic group. The seriousness of this problem is evidenced by the growing numbers of families affected and the severity of the cases reported. We know that through early detection, intervention, and treatment, that it's critical to maintain the integrity of the family. And child abuse prevention volunteers and professionals continue to assist our families to decrease the incidence of child abuse through prevention and treatment and coordination of services throughout our county. But there is a need to increase public awareness. So every year at this time, we recognize this month, so we can increase public awareness, promote and support intervention and prevention programs, and to acknowledge the efforts and the dedication of our many volunteers and professionals who are committed to the protection enhancement of child's life. So in declaring month of April 2005 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, we encourage all residents to actively participate with us in bringing an end to child abuse in our community. We commend our law enforcement partners, the Ventura County Partnership for Safe Families, our Ventura County Behavioral Health Department, our Ventura County Public Health Department, our Ventura County Human Services Agency, all of the outstanding professionals who work with us and on behalf of the children most in crisis and in need. So I'll step down now to present this. And if you'd like to give us some highlights, Mr. Myers, of those present.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Mr. Johnston, every April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it's one of those mixed feelings kind of months because it brings again to our awareness this tragedy that happens in too many families in Ventura County. I was reminded of this a couple of months ago. I was visiting one of our offices in our Ventura office, and I asked social workers, "Well, how's it going?" And one of the lead workers told me, "Well, we're running around trying to deal with this 14-year-old victim of sexual molester who is a runaway right now on the streets but doesn't want to return home because her mother doesn't believe her. Her stepfather was molesting her from the age of four onwards, and she's had enough, and now she's worried that her younger sister is also is going to substitute for her." And we were having trouble finding a place where she could be safely protected. But you know about this, Ted. You remember. And I do remember. I don't always like to remember, but I was out there on the front lines with those people. I was an emergency response supervisor 15 years ago, serving the region Camarillo East. And we would have referrals up to 240, 250 a month of child abuse and neglect. And there was a higher percentage of sexual molester in the East County. Typically, we run about 14 percent, but in those days, we would run 20 to 25 percent of our cases of sexual molester. And it was a tragedy. We have our folks here from Safe Harbor who help us intervene on those cases. But prevention is where it's at. All of us in this field would like to see child abuse end and be out of a job and do something else. And so I'd like to ask Judy Rivera to come forward and say a few words about our child abuse prevention efforts and partners.
Hi, thank you. Good morning Supervisor Long, member of the board, Mr. Johnston. We know that nationally, April is the one month of the year dedicated to child abuse prevention awareness. But for the Human Services Agency and my department, Children and Family Services, every month is Child Abuse Prevention Month. In fact, every day we are dedicated to protecting children and empowering families. Every day, we work to identify children who are at risk of child abuse and neglect. And every day, we intervene on behalf of the children who need safe and permanent homes. We believe that defending the safety and well-being of children is a fundamental responsibility that we share with our community. This month, we remember that everyone plays a role in preventing child abuse and neglect, and we encourage all of our residents to join the fight to protect our children. In the packets that you have today, you received examples of how everybody could play a role in helping our community's children. So today, I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge our partners who work tirelessly with us to help prevent child abuse and neglect, and they are also committed to strengthening families. Our county Board of Supervisors, all law enforcement, the Ventura County Partnership for Safe Families, and is represented today by David Friedlander and Lori Steinhauser, behavioral health, public health, the District Attorney's Office, Safe Harbor Program Coordinator is Susan Becker, and she is also here with us today, and the numerous volunteers and other professionals who work on behalf of families and childrens that are in crisis and need. Safe children and healthy families are a shared responsibility, and indeed, it does take a village. Before I end today, I would like to point out that child abuse and neglect can incur in any family, regardless of cultural and ethnic background, regardless of socioeconomic status or religious belief. Therefore, with our county's support and commitment, we will continue to fight the good fight of strengthening families and protecting children. We believe that we can make our community safe and supportive for all families and for all children. So on behalf of our agency and my staff, I thank you for your attention and for your efforts toward prevention.
Thank you.
Is there any word of comment?
If I could, I would just have to say, from time -- we have a number of organizations and groups that come in and from time to time make this comment. But certainly, when it comes to helping children suffer from child abuse, you truly are doing God's work. And every day, you're a part of it. The good you're doing for those children is immeasurable and hard for any of us to understand unless we've been a victim ourselves. So thank everybody for the tremendous efforts that you put forward and the tremendous amount of good you're doing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Again, thank you. Look forward to the conference and all your good work. Thanks so much. Our next 9:30 time certain is the opportunity for the board to proclaim Crime Victims' Rights Week, and that is to be recognized April 10th through the 16th. I know we have Catherine Dugan here, who's the Director of our Crime Victims Assistance Program, to receive the REZO. I will just highlight a couple parts from the REZO and then certainly speak to what will be taking place over this next week, Catherine.
Thank you.
This marks the 25th anniversary of the National Crime Victims' Rights Week, and it provides a public opportunity to reflect on the devastating impact of crime and terrorism on victims and our society, and to strengthen our national resolve to ensure that victims' needs are identified and addressed. We value the critical assistance and services that provide for crime victims' basic needs such as fair treatment, dignity, respect, and information, the life essentials that are provided such as safe housing, food, support for children, transportation, counseling, and medical services. We value those among us who work on behalf of crime victims to improve rights, services, and treatments for victims of crime and to build a better and more just community in our country. Despite the impressive accomplishments of the past 25 years, crime victims' rights and services, there remain many challenges to ensure that all crime victims and survivors are treated with dignity and afforded services that provide help and hope to them. We value the right to be free from violence, to be safe in our homes, and to live in peace in our communities. The District Attorney's, Ellie Liston, Crime Victims Assistance Program is joining forces with victim service programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Ventura County in America to observe National Crime Victims' Rights Week. And with this proclamation, we will have the honor of doing the same. Catherine.
Thank you. This week, crime victims, service providers, peace officers, criminal and juvenile justice professionals, and community volunteers across the nation will join together to commemorate the 25th anniversary of National Crime Victims' Rights Week. National Crime Victims' Rights Week is a time to pay tribute to those who have shown exceptional compassion and care for another in need. It is a time to recognize individuals and community organizations for their outstanding efforts on behalf of crime victims. Present today are representatives from Ventura County organizations that provide services and assistance for victims of crime in our communities. At this time, I'd like to introduce these organizations and their representatives. Maria Collier, Director of Programs for Interface Children and Family Services, Maria. Cherie DeVal, President of the Coalition to End Domestic Violence, Cherie. David Friedlander, President of the Ventura County Partnership for Safe Families. Gary Hour, Chief of the District Attorney's Bureau of Investigation. Patty Murphy, Chief Assistant to the District Attorney. Sheriff Brooks, thank you Sheriff for being here this morning. The Victim Advocate Staff of the District Attorney's Crime Victim Assistance Program. Susan Becker from the District Attorney's Safe Harbor Program. And a minute ago, Ted Myers was here from Human Services Agencies. If I've missed anyone, please. Natalie Erickson. Natalie Erickson is our Sexual Assault Nurse at Safe Harbor, and she is the individual who conducts examinations for children who have been abused or sexually molested. We want to thank all of these individuals for their tremendous contribution. National Crime Victims' Rights Week is also a time to acknowledge our many accomplishments in the field of victim assistance. And indeed, this year, we have much to celebrate, as this year marks the 25th anniversary of the District Attorney's Crime Victim Assistance Program. The Crime Victim Assistance Program provides the highest level of comprehensive services to victims of crime in this county. The success of the program has been the skill, the determination, and the leadership of the people that are involved in the work day to day. 25 years ago, two victim advocates undertook the challenge of addressing the needs of crime victims in Ventura County. Today, we have among us one of those victim advocates, Phyllis Pully. Phyllis has been a victim advocate for Ventura County for 25 years. She was one of the first advocates.
That's a long time.
Today, our Crime Victims Assistance Program serves more than 5,000 victims of crime annually. Today, we have reason to be hopeful that crime victims will be treated with compassion and with dignity, that the scales of justice will be truly balanced, that the rights of the crime victims will receive equal consideration to the rights of their accused offenders, and that we can address a crime victim's need for safety, for counseling, for information and notification, and for restitution from their offenders, and most importantly, for the right to participate in the proceedings that affect their case. In a nation where almost to a person, every one of us has been touched by crime, we must continue to pursue avenues that engage and involve everyone across our nation, in communities large and small, in every culture and race, religion and ethnicity, to join in the effort to help victims recover from the aftermath of crime. Because when one person has been a crime victim, its effects touch us all. I thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning, and I invite you to join District Attorney Greg Totten and the staff of the Crime Victims Assistance Program this week, April 14th, at 11:30 in the Center Fountain area, as we all join together to celebrate and commemorate this 25th anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for keeping your good work up. To have such a strong organization is really important for victims of crime. So thank you.
You really realize how these crime victims, and even the one before, child abuse, it goes across socioeconomic levels, it goes across demography. We have this throughout the county, and it's so wonderful to have resources available for people who need it. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Our next time certain item will be Supervisor Parks honoring the California Native Plant Society on its 40th anniversary.
I do have a resolution. I'm going to read it up here and then come on down. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring the California Native Plant Society on its 40th anniversary. Whereas since 1965, the California Native Plant Society has helped us to know and to value California's native plants while working to conserve these plants in their natural habitats through sound science, education, advocacy, and responsible land stewardship. And whereas it is proper use of our American liberty to pass on to future generations a legacy of healthy and thriving natural resources, and California a legacy of healthy and thriving natural resources, and California Native Plant Society shows us the way. And whereas California's economic security is safeguarded by the work of the California Native Plant Society, inasmuch as our prosperity is deeply rooted in our California's natural capital, its remarkable native biological diversity, and rooted particularly in the plant communities that give us foods, commodities, medicines, tourism, and jobs while also cleansing our air and water and providing protection against floods, landslides, and soil erosion. And whereas our local Channel Islands chapter of the California Native Plant Society enjoys a command of sound, state-of-the-art botanical science and bringing this expertise to bear on land use issues, shapes and guides local planning decisions, thereby helping Ventura County to honor our obligations to future generations to preserve our Ventura County natives, including, and bear with me, I'm going to try one Latin one. Pentakita lioni, which is the lion's pentakita. We have Ventura marsh milkveach, Santa Susana tar plant, Ojai fritillary, hairy matelaha poppy, one of my favorite, the canoe buckwheat, the San Fernando Valley spine flower, which just as a result of a lawsuit recently was actually required by a judge to be put on the endangered species list, being that it only appears two places in the world, that makes sense. Also, the California ground cone, the verdi live forever, live forever, the netal bushmella, the California orecot grass, the fuchsia-flowered gooseberry, the netal scrub oak, and another nice Latin one, the viola pendicolata tory and gray with a subspecies of pendicolata, also known as the Johnny Jump Up. Now therefore, be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors honors the California Native Plant Society and does so with a will to help our native plants to grace our homeland forever. And we have before us this morning David Magny, and I'm going to come down and present this to you, and if you'd like to make some comments, please do, and I'll join you at the mic.
Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman Long, Supervisor Parks, and other supervisors, thank you very much. On behalf of California Native Plant Society, we're very honored to be recognized in this fashion. As mentioned in the resolution, CNPS was started in 1965 in an effort by local botanists in the Bay Area to protect a park from being developed. And here we are today, 40 years later, still working hard to get people to understand the value, importance, and nature and aesthetics of our California native flora, and we do that from a science basis, and always advocating to try and protect them as much as we can, and how we can also use them in our lives in many ways, including in our landscapes. And I have brought with me some past journals of our organization Fremontia about native plants, as well as some pamphlets on how to grow them in your garden and other things like that, and I hope you enjoy them. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's closed, man. Yeah, open it.
Okay, well, if you wanted, you can touch that. And, um, oh, there it's working. Turn your back again, then.
Is that it? Is it slencada?
All right. Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Shall I go on? And while I'm here, I would ask Commander Keith Parks if he'd come on up. Commander Parks was the Chief of Police in Thousand Oaks, and I want to thank him so much for his service. He really reached out in not only providing the wonderful police services, but really as a gentleman and networking with so much of the community. And we know that crime prevention involves a lot of community support, and I think because of your service, we have helped to increase that support. And I'd like to read this resolution on the Board of Supervisors honoring Commander Keith Parks for his service at Thousand Oaks, Chief of Police. And it reads, whereas Commander Keith Parks has served with great distinction as the Chief of Police for Thousand Oaks from 2000 to 2005, and has been a dedicated leader and administrator of programs that keep Thousand Oaks as one of the safest cities in America, and whereas he is a native of Thousand Oaks area, earning his high school diploma from Newberry Park High, go Panthers, an associate in arts degree in administration of justice from Moore Park College, his bachelor of arts degree from California Lutheran University, and his master's of arts degree in public administration from Cal State University, Northridge, and whereas, and I'm sure it would have been Cal State University, Channel Islands, but it wasn't here at the time, whereas he has earned the respect and recognition of his colleagues and supervisors as evidenced by such honors as his appointment to serve on the notable School Law Enforcement Partnership Committee overseen by the State Attorney General and State Department of Education, his receiving of the distinguished service award from the Association of California School Administrators, and being selected to serve the city of Thousand Oaks as Chief of Police. And whereas, in his capacity as Chief of Police, Commander Parks is a great asset to the City of Thousand Oaks Council, the county supervisors of the Canale Wreck and Park District, the Canale Valley School District, and numerous other service organizations, and whereas he initiated numerous programs that have greatly enhanced the quality of life in Thousand Oaks, such as we have the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Community Police Resource Center, the Newberry Park Branch, Library Resource Center, as well as Resource Center kiosk in the Oaks Mall, and has effectively reorganized and expanded our outstanding public safety programs such as the Community Oriented Policing and Problem Solving Unit, the Volunteers in Policing, the Sheriff's Teen Traffic Offender Program, as well as the Crime Prevention Programs. And it reads, now therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Commander Keith Parks for his outstanding services at City of Thousand Oaks as Chief of Police, and we will miss you, I do already, and I wish you luck in your new assignment, so congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to say a couple words, please?
Well, yeah, I want to say thank you Supervisor Parks, Chairwoman Long, and all the members of the Board of Supervisors, Johnny Johnson, our CEO. It has been a pleasure and an honor to, well, 28 years with the Sheriff Department, I'm not retiring yet, I still have a ways to go, but the last five years to serve my hometown, the sheriff's hometown of Thousand Oaks, had just been a joy. And I look back five years ago, and I need to say that the sheriff and then city manager Mary Jane Laz got together and said, hey, let's try Keith. He grew up here, he knows this area, let's see what he can do in Thousand Oaks. And then the tremendous support I received from the city council, which included Supervisor Parks at that time, and it just, it was a wonderful experience. We put a lot of great programs into place, and I have to say, last year, actually the year 2003, City of Thousand Oaks was the safest city in the country of all cities of 100,000 or more. And as I reported to the city council last week, our crime rate went down again in Thousand Oaks. Now, I don't know what's going to happen as we get compared, usually that comparison comes out when Department of Justice puts out their crime stats in June, but it'll be interesting to see how Thousand Oaks fared amongst all cities in the country of 100,000 or more, but our crime rate did go down. And I have to attribute that to not only the partnership we have with the city council, the city council, the city of Thousand Oaks, but the tremendous county employees, the incredible group of people, men and women, who work for the Ventura County Sheriff Department, the county of Ventura, and they serve the city of Thousand Oaks. Because what we do is the sheriff says, train them, give them a great mission, and then help them do the job, and that's exactly what we do out there. That's exactly what you've seen from all these agencies up here in the county that have come before you today. And we've had a tremendous success in Thousand Oaks following that model. I look at our, our crime rate goes down, and I think a big part of it is the fact that we put together a gang unit that is second to none in the state of California. They are the experts in testifying on gang involvement, and they also are very exceptional at identifying those kids who are being recruited by gangs, going out, talking to their parents, making the parents aware of it, so we can partner with the parents to prevent their children from being recruited by gangs. It's a great program. The Sheriff's Teen Traffic Offender Program, I can't take credit for that, we copied it from LASO Lost Hills. Plagiarism is a great, great thing, and you see something working really well, you copy it.
Absolutely.
And LASO Lost Hills, our Neighbors to the South had this great program, we put it together, and where we were having almost seven teens a year die in fatal crashes because of high-speed driving and just some incredibly terrible behavior, we have had none the last couple of years. And we've gone out and talked to families and made parents aware, this is what your young teen driver was seen doing. What do you want to do about it? We had parents say, thank you. Come here, son, give me your license, you're done, or we're going to talk about it in six months, you're going to drive with me again as a parent. We want to empower parents to protect their children. You know, I think about the fact that we've had to close down so many DARE programs throughout the county, just because it's just so difficult to do a lot of those really good prevention programs when you're suffering the severe budget issues that we've had over the last couple of years. But we've had a DARE program in Thousand Oaks that's still going strong. In fact, Thousand Oaks actually helped take over two of the schools that were served by the county that are in the Canale Valley Unified School District, just because it's an important program. And tremendous outreach to the families and the kids in that program, and just allowing them to partner with us to try and give them some skills, to help them. And so, prevention is the key. You've seen that all morning with all your presentations this morning, and that's a big part of the Sheriff Department, it's a big part of the Thousand Oaks Police Department, and we thank you for your support, and I certainly thank the sheriff for allowing me to serve Thousand Oaks, just that special. Now I'm back serving the entire Sheriff Department, running our Human Resources Bureau, but it was a joy to actually focus on Thousand Oaks for five years and see a lot of old friends, and I think everybody I've known for 35 or 40 years, they got a ticket, called me, and complained. They knew where to find me, but that's just one of the things when you serve your hometown. But it was actually a joy to be out there, so thank you again very much Supervisor Parks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We all reap the benefits of the work. Sheriff Brooks, would you like to come up and say something? I know I put you on the spot, but my children have gone through the DARE program too, and it's such a rewarding program, as well as, it's wonderful to see stopping all these teen accidents. That is just such a terrible tragedy, so thank you for all your work.
Keith's been away, he forgot there was a three-minute rule here, so I apologize. I have to leave and meet with a family of a victim of crime, but I just want to thank you for your support. We provide excellent police services to all five of our contract cities. We couldn't do it without your help and support. We believe it makes the entire county safer, and if they didn't believe we could do as good or better of a job than anyone else could do, we wouldn't be doing this. And it all starts with leadership. Keith has been a great leader and a great ambassador for the county and for the Sheriff's Department, and we appreciate that and your recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I just say something? We really, I really appreciated the words you had here this morning, because they tell me that community policing, that's what, that's what you were doing, and it's the thing that has to be done. My compliments to you and thanks to you.
Thank you. Okay, the board's agenda is complete, but we yet to have closed session to work on, and then we'll be back here at 11 o'clock for APCD. And will there be an announcement on a closed session, Mr. County Counsel?
No, there will not.
There will not be an announcement, so we will adjourn from closed session then. Be back after APCD. Thank you.[1391.33] Thank you.